And everybody that the northwest corner of this room has documentation and paperwork involving what we're going to be talking about tonight, so help yourself, I don't see anybody that's new to the room. Anyway, if we could, let's pause for a moment, reflect on how lucky we are to be at Holden Beach and thankful we are for no more damage than we've sustained and all the other good reasons to be thankful. Let's pause for just a moment. All righty, thank you very much, and we're on number two on the agenda. Officially call the meeting to order and say welcome to all of you, thank you for being here, and let's stand and pledge allegiance to the flag to my right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, number four, the consideration of the agenda, I understand we, due to the storm and other reasons, let's talk about the agenda and some possible amendments to the agenda, I believe.
Yes, sir. I've recommended to the commissioners that we truncate the agenda significantly and limit the items on the agenda to only those that are, got to be done tonight. And those items, I've informed the commissioners earlier today, those items are as follow to push to the October meeting. Item number eight, the recognition of the National Weather Service. Item number nine, the pavement condition survey, Mr. Lifford couldn't be here tonight. Item number 10, the water system asset management plan, green engineering couldn't be here tonight either. And then items 12, 13, 14, and 15 are the staff reports, would recommend pushing those also, in addition to item 16, the action on rules or procedures. Item 19, which is the discussion and possible action on long-term summer concert venue. Item 20, possible actions for non-legislative actions. Item 21, discussion for adoption of an action tracking tool. And item 23, discussion, action on an amendment to the stormwater master plan. Subsequent to that, suggestion to the commissioners, feedback from Commissioner Meyer on item 15 is to keep the manager's report in there in the form of a situational report concerning the storm, along with Commissioner Thomas's suggestion to keep the discussion of the rules and procedure update on the agenda. So I would defer to the commissioners on inclusion of item 15 and 16 and go with the push on the other 10 agenda items.
So those numbers you just went through were not, we would not do anything with tonight, is that what you're saying?
Except for the ones that, item 15 and 16, that Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Myers suggested that they be addressed.
I guess I'm the slowest one in the room, but 15 and 16.
Can I take a shot at the motion? Motion to delete the items that the town manager has suggested with the exception of items 15 and 16.
I'll second.
For clarity, Madam Clerk, would you read those numbers that were going to be deleted?
Eight, nine, 10, 12, 13, 14, 19, 20, 21, and 23.
Anybody have any problem understanding the motion? All right. All right, we have a motion made and seconded and discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed to the motion, say no. So the motion to amend the agenda passes as explained. So now we are on number five, Madam Clerk, conflict of interest.
Part six, rule 13 E of the 2024 Rules of Procedure requires members to disclose any potential conflicts of interest. Please state if you have any potential conflicts. Mayor Holden.
No.
Mayor Chris M. Meyer.
No conflict.
Commissioner Smith.
No conflict.
Commissioner Thomas.
No conflict.
Commissioner Dyer.
No conflict.
Commissioner Park.
No conflict.
All right. We are now on number six, consideration of approving the minutes from August 20th special meeting and August 20th regular meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from our August 20th special meeting and the August 20th regular meeting.
For a second.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all.
Little bit of discussion, I'm sorry. And I'm not, I don't have the verbiage for it, but at the last regular meeting, we discussed that we weren't able to review the peer tasker outside of a public meeting, and I think that discussion was important to capture because it speaks to why it takes us a while to get some stuff done. Heather, are you able to just kind of capture some of that? You know, I asked the question, and you said, yeah, we can't do that, and David said, let's wait till we get it on the agenda.
I mean, I can, but you guys, I'd have to bring it back to you for approval without the wording. I mean, they're just general accounts, really, except for the motion.
Okay, all right. Then I withdraw that comment.
I mean, it's completely up to you, I would just have to bring something back for you to.
Yeah, we've got enough to do. I withdraw those comments.
So you're ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. The minutes are approved for both of those meetings as presented. Can everybody hear? If you can't hear, raise your hand. All right, public comments on the agenda items that are left. Okay. Make sure that. 19 and 23 were.
Removed.
Removed, okay. Sorry, Ms. Page. Okay, so now we move on to number 11, is that correct?
Yes, sir, but we need to let Christie have a moment to call Leo, he's gonna phone in if there's any questions from the board.
Okay, we'll give the Assistant Town Manager a moment to dial in.
That was quite a contract.
Hello, sir, this is the town of Holden Beach, Mayor Holden speaking, and welcome to our meeting. So if you'll bear with us, Mr. Hewitt, you want to lead this, who's gonna lead this?
I will. The, tonight's agenda includes a suite of actions that are required in order to proceed with the outfit of lift station three, which is the last of the three lift stations that we set out, beginning in 2012, in a program to remedy some of the vulnerabilities of our sewer system, mainly from the threats during storm overwash events. And as a preamble to that, I happen to pull out an excerpt from the May 2012 managers' meeting, if I can be indulged in just reading a few sentences from that. Significant lingering concerns remain over the viability of contingency operations and the lift stations inundation during storm overwash events. It is highly likely that such an assessment, and it's referring to a risk cost benefit assessment conducted by the commissioners, will identify significant sewer system operational limitations which can only be remedied by major capital outlays. They must be, they weren't quantified at that particular point in time, nor were they addressed in the 2012 budget, but they must be, they must be dealt with before a major storm brings the reality of design limitations and the community's service provisions, expectations in the contrast. And since that time, we've, we, the town had a couple of studies performed that resulted in plans to outfit all three lift stations, one at a time. The first one was number four at the West End, a couple of years later, number three at the 800 block, and then we had a couple of false starts for the Greensboro Lift Station, unfavorable bid climate, to say the least. But it brings us to today, which in the intervening time between when we had the extremely high bids, we were able to procure almost $3 million in EPA grant funding and a $2 million state appropriation that collectively those two may just pay for the entire project. And that's what it, what it looks like that we're here tonight. So the, the items for your action tonight is the Terre Haute contract, that, that project, the sewer lift station two at Greensboro Street has been bid several times. The initial scope of work was first advertised in the beginning of August of this year, when we didn't get any bids. Second bid opening was scheduled the third week of August and got one bid from Terre Haute in the amount of $3,899,000. Included in your package at, the Terre Haute contract is a separate package that's been provided you. The bid tab and recommendation of award from the engineer is at page 17. The award resolution that is basically saying you approve the award of the contract contingent upon the granting agencies' okay is at page 26. There's also a requisite engineering services agreement addendum, which increases the engineer's fees in the amount of approximately $85,000. There are two budget items included at page 33 and page 34, the budget ordinance amendments 2411 and the adoption of the capital project ordinance on page 34. The granting agencies require that our project be identified in a standalone capital project. So what budget ordinance amendment 2411 does is it zeros out the programmed estimated funding out of our operational budget, and then by adopting the capital project, it stands it up in its own discreet autonomous ordinance. So as I, as scoped, the, the project, the grants, we believe will pay for everything. However, I, I would be remiss that if any of our reimbursements are denied for any reason, the town will have to foot the bill for that. Likewise, if there are any contract amendments, change orders that exceed the project as scoped in the capital project ordinance, the project, the project ordinance will have to be amended if it exceeds the programmed amount as, as proposed to be adopted here It's been, it's been a fairly long road aho, and in order to keep the project on track with the work planned for construction beginning in October, November, with the work going through July, August of '25, the board would need to act on all of these items, A through F, and should you be so inclined, I think that a motion that is approving of all of the items in A through F, that would include direction for the manager to execute all the documents and complete all the required administrative actions is, is appropriate.
And I'd like to make a motion to direct the town manager to execute all documents and complete associated administrative actions, including amending ordinance 2411 and 2412 and 2413. Will that do it, David?
Mr. Park.
I'll second that.
Anyone else want to speak?
I just had a question. So I understand we're taking basically all the items out of our current budget ordinance and setting them up in the capital project ordinance, and it's going from $4,776 down to $4,551. The construction estimate is $4,300,000. I know the bid was 3.8, did we just put some buffer in there to match the revenue that was coming in from the two grants?
It includes a contingency of 5% and also the procurement of the skid, which is $207,000. Collectively, the 5% contingency on the 3.8 and the $207,000 skid is the $4.3 million construction.
What is the skid?
Well, it's all the vacuum equipment, because in that station, the vacuum pumps always.
Can we get a microphone over here, or somewhere?
That's our item 26 priority.
Maintenance Department head is.
That's getting, when it's all the equipment goes in the station, it's basically vacuum pumps, new everything goes in the top, just like we dug it up, it's all built up, all the same way.
So it's not part of the 3.8 bid?
No.
The purchase of the equipment was on us, that's the way we done it.
We already did it, though, right? Or not, did we already do that?
No, we've not, sure yet.
Okay.
If we had, we would have lost warranty on it, because warranty was only good for a year, and if we went ahead and followed through and had it shipped, warranty would have been dead before we ever included service, so we couldn't do that. And I am glad to say that everybody has honored that price and hasn't tried to run this stuff forward there, because they have had that equipment sitting in that warehouse probably for two years now at least.
So the equipment aspects of this station were not in the bid, they're pulled out and separated?
Not in the bid, it's just stripped.
All the equipment, or just that equipment?
Just that equipment, I mean, just the vacuum equipment was not in the bid, that was on us to purchase, there is backsever, just like I said, it's kind of cut and dry, that's the same thing, so we passed two of them. And probably that's a good name, because they keep the market upside down, because you know, anybody could buy something, they said backsever, they're gonna charge you a profit margin there, that's just what I would give.
So it was in the contract, I guess I didn't read my form in 60 pages. Okay. Did, I assume the attorneys reviewed this? I mean, this, this was dropped off Friday, I had to go out of town, so.
Yes.
Don't have time to review it. Attorney did review it, okay.
Absolutely.
Anyone else, any other commissioner comment? You ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foe, say no. Unanimously pass. Now to leave.
Amen. We gotta read that, man.
Okay, are we ready to go to number 15?
Yes, sir, just a moment.
Did that include a document resolution?
Yeah, because he said including, so I don't know if we're thinking.
I won't.
Item 15. Yes, sir.
Item 15 is the manager's report. I won't belabor the written text in front of you in deference to the request for basically a situational report on the impacts of the storm regarding road flooding, pumping locations and operations, in addition to the sewer system status and, and property damage. Pretty much, well, first of all, we have been presented with a set of circumstances that instead of us requesting aid from the county, we've been, we have been requested or requisitioned help regarding some of their high-water vehicles and digital signing. So the first thing that we got was an ask for some digital signage that we have, y'all seen it at the bottom of the bridge over on Stone Chimney Road, where they had some damage to the road over there. DOT couldn't get to them, so we, we loaned our digital sign there for some traffic control. Also, Frank Dilworth assisted Boilin' Spring Lakes with some evacuation of stranded motorists and also some sheriff's deputies in the provision of emergency services over the last couple of days with the Humvee. So that's, that's a little bit different where we're able to provide some of the assets. Regarding road floating, road floating, I was thinking about that guy on the airboat coming down 17. Yeah, the, these, this perspective is just limited to Holden Beach and our Ocean Boulevard. Monday's first closure was in the 187 Ocean Boulevard West area, or driven by a stranded motorist at 187 Ocean Boulevard, who was in a sedan. The fire department, at that point in time, Monday morning, the, the pumper truck was bumper deep, and so we closed it there, redirected traffic down Rothschild over to Roger and then back out Ocean Boulevard West. Road closure number two was in the 300 block, where we cunked off between Neptune and High Point. After a interval of time there, it looked like people were zigzagging, you know, you go down, down, then come back up. So those, those two redirections basically merged into the, the third larger one, which was an evolution of one and two, and brought them down Rothschild all the way through Brunswick, back out on Ocean Boulevard at High Point. I understand Yacht Watch got pretty close, but we never closed it, and we never closed off the east end. We kept, we kept those closures in place with the cones overnight, but opened everything back up by noon today. We kept it closed off last night with the cones, just because at nighttime, those things are, you know, we didn't want people thinking it was open, and then all of a sudden end up in Tom's yard or something from hitting a skid place there. But it looks like everything is opened up now, today, as of noon, as of noon. Our pumping locations, I believe Mr. Clemmons started on the West End on Sunday and then moved over to the east end, the, the West End in the 1300 block, you know, the, the normal culprits, and then moved over to the east end in the Roger Ranger Street, excuse me, area yesterday, and as of this morning, seems to be working somewhat enough that it has enabled us to keep our sewer system operational. But it, it is problematic whenever you get that much water and on top of the valve pits, it's going to be, continue to be problematic, but we're, what we're thankful for is that we didn't have a lot of people here and load on the system. Not, I mean, that's always a six of one and a half dozen of the other. Property damage, we haven't been made aware of any, any property damage, private property damage, and if there are any issues with town roads and streets, along with any lift station issues, those things tend to pop, start popping and pinging a day or two afterwards. So we're just kind of keeping our fingers crossed. Day after tomorrow, we're supposed to get some more rain, and then tomorrow night is the big full moon tide. So with all the water moving down the river, we've got the big full moon tide coming up, we're probably gonna have water on the streets, I know it's Scotch bonnet, and then however much it, it encroaches onto the, the finger streets, we'll, we'll have to, to, to keep our eye on that. Regarding the beach strand, although Mr. Smith says that he's, he's lost some beach, it's not apparent that, from the way that the beach is measured, out the depth of closure, not just up on the hill, but out the depth of closure, that we have significant damages. We have ridden the beach a couple of times, and we've seen a couple of incursions in what I call the dry sand beach, but believe, especially with these high tides over the next several days, remember, this is King Tide Week, it's just not a couple of days, it's a whole week of King Tides that will see some equilibration, or see a, a high degree of equilibration that'll, that'll spread it back out. So what's, what's normally dry sand berm may have had some incursions, but there was no place that we saw where the water actually came up beyond the toe of the frontal dune, the seaward toe of the frontal dune. In fact, on the east end, it actually looked that the rack line was, the tide rack line deposition was in a lower location than it was yesterday for high tide. So just remember that we've, we've still got the, the super full moon tomorrow night, there's a lot of water coming down the river, and if you're gonna be traveling off the, off the island, keep in mind that, that the road closures are most likely gonna open, and it's gonna change as the water moves down, as, as the infrastructure settles from this, from this event, the probability that there will be further issues associated with infrastructure is probable and high. Who would have ever thought that we were seeing basically a landslide on the embankment here on the southern terminus of, of the bridge abutment? Looks like there's about a 30 by 30 slab, 18 inches thick, that slid down three or four feet, it looks like to me, up there. So as, I would encourage folks to be mindful of that, and there is a website that DOT assembles for it and provides a fairly good representation of road closures. What is that, again?
Was that in Allen's latest? Was that in Allen's latest?
It is, it is. It's in, it's in the mayor's email blast. So I think. So I think I'd, I'd like to, to end up by saying that, you know, this water situation is evolving. Hazardous road conditions are probable for the next couple of days, and just be vigilant because it, it's not over yet. That's all I got.
David, will the trash be picked up tomorrow, or is that still...
Trash is not going to be picked up tomorrow, it'll be picked up on Saturday.
Ms. Adams?
Yeah.
Mr. Myers has the floor.
Yep. What's the reason we don't pump the 300 block?
I'll defer to Mr. Clemmons on that.
Well, I actually started pumping Tom and Barry's, and I actually had sewer out, to try to help me quick in the process of getting the cover. So that's the main reason I've done west end first, and I actually done this east end next, because as you know, just outside the ferry, that whole area was under the water from end to end. And I actually almost started to try to attempt to pump one of the 300 block today, but unless you've got enough pipe, and if you can get past the dry sand part of the beach, you run a chance of really damaging your frontal dunes and your sea oaks and stuff like that, because once it bubbles up in that area, it wakes the cover, so swallows through there, and that's the reason that I didn't set a pump up there today.
Not enough hose or pipes?
Well, I didn't really have that much hose, and if you want to be honest about it, you can only get so much manpower out of my feet with myself. You know, and I, you know, I was nothing more by myself than one of them other guys trying to keep the sewer running, but I said it'd take a lot of resources, and that's pretty planning to be able to set something up to do that on a regular basis, and I actually got a few ideas that I wanted to discuss with David before I get into the microphone and start spitting something out, but I've been thinking about some ways that I think might happen in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak?
You said the trash pickup is Saturday, is that the last Saturday pickup of the season?
Uh, it goes through the end of the month, Saturday pickup.
End of the month, so last Saturday of September?
Actually, so you know, before I live and I'm... That's right, isn't it, Chris?
Do I?
Trash is through the end of September, isn't it, on Saturdays?
I think that's correct, and if I'm not, I put it against me, wrong way yesterday, and I'm going to get pulled, maybe eight hours asleep tonight.
Twenty.
They said if you have extra bags, because they normally will collect extra bags this week, since they didn't pick up on Tuesday, they will take extra.
Any more questions from the commissioners, or Mr. Hewitt? If not, Mr. Hewitt, thank you, and we'll move on to the next item, which is sixteen. Mr. Myers and Ms. Thomas?
So this is a very small change on the rules of procedure. Currently, the rules of procedure just say, you can see it's in there, the executive secretary designated by the commissioners with administrative assistance from the town clerk shall prepare a draft agenda in advance of each meeting. This is making a small change to add for the mayor pro temp, so that there's a backup in case the executive secretary is unavailable. I've had a lot of things going on in the last few months, between emergency eye surgery and deaths in family and things, and I feel like it would be beneficial to the town to have a backup for that position.
Are you making that a motion, ma'am?
Yes, I'm making a motion that we adopt this change to the rules of procedure.
Second, any discussion?
Can, we've had our, my, Miss Mary can I have a floor? We've had our town clerk take care of the agenda for years, and I just, I don't see why we need to, to change any procedures. You can handle it if you, you're not there, it's been done properly for a while. And number two, you know, why can't maybe any, another commissioner other than the mayor pro temp do it? Those are my two questions.
So another commissioner could do it, I just thought it was easier to put it in the rules of procedure to have the mayor pro temp, since that's always a designated person. We could change that wording if you wanted to, to, or another designated person. And yeah, I just think that, it goes back to what is the executive secretary's position, and what is their, and so we've already had that discussion, so I'm not going to engage in that, but...
Yes, sir.
I, for one, don't want to do that job. So if there are other commissioners that want to take that job on, that's, that's fine, but I'm not looking for that one.
Can we not?
Yes.
Can we not just word it instead of the mayor pro temp and available commissioner?
We can change the wording to, or a designated, designee or something like that? Would that...
I don't, I don't think it's a necessary position that we need.
I understand that, I'm not having that discussion.
I'm just giving my discussion.
That's really not relevant to what I'm trying to make the change.
Okay, I'll just keep my mouth shut, then, I'm sorry I brought up a discussion.
Anybody else want to say their name?
I mean, if we want to change to a designee, that's...
Yeah, I mean, Tracy could call, maybe you're going to be, have to be gone or out of town or something. Then, then, then what we would do, we could say a, an available commissioner.
Okay.
Would that be okay, Tracy?
Absolutely, I, I'm willing to change that to say...
Because you could call one of us up and say, hey, I'm going to be gone, Tom's going to be gone, can you handle it? And that way we could, you know, even make it to where it's not just a person, because, like you say, stuff happens.
Yep. So I'm willing to change to, I'm going to change, where, I think the change would be to say, instead of, or the mayor pro temp, to say, or a designee. Is that the proper word?
Yeah, if you do it that way...
So it would be the executive secretary that would call a designee.
But who's going, yeah, are you design, who's designating the, like, does the board have to designate that in a meeting, or you designate, and then if you're out of town, I think that might make it a little more confusing, honestly, but it's up to you guys.
I'm all right either way. Can you say an available commissioner?
I mean, you can, but I just don't want to get in the middle of one person wanting one thing and another person wants, like, and I think it maybe needs to put on here as a backup, because you don't, you know what I'm saying, it shouldn't always be, the way that you have it right now, it says the mayor pro temp or the executive secretary. What if the two of you don't agree on something for the agenda? I don't want to be in the middle of anybody, is all I'm saying, so. So as a backup, just change the wording so that it says the executive secretary, in the event the executive secretary isn't available, this person is the designee, or something like that, just so I don't get put in the middle of two people not wanting the same thing on the agenda. That's all.
Well, you're only going to work with one of us.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the wording of that doesn't really say that to me. That says one of you two can, like, do it, not, not if you are not available.
I'm confused. I mean, yeah, basically Tracy does have a lot going on, and she needs the lead of life, and she needs some coverage, and it, you know, mayor pro temp is a position, but it can be, I would think you would designate, or you would call around and see who's willing to do it, and you could then tell Heather, I'm designating Rick for next week.
Yeah, if it's designated by the executive secretary in the event, perhaps, that's the agreement, I could make that worded, I'm not...
So should we say the executive secretary designated by commissioners, or a designee if executive secretary is unavailable?
Add an extra sentence after what is already there?
Yeah, I can't hear you.
You're not hearing me?
No.
I would just add an extra sentence after what you already have currently that says if executive secretary is unavailable, then designated commissioner.
Okay.
So that you're not confusing the language in the first word.
That's, that's what I was trying to say, yeah.
Sorry.
No, you're good, no, you're perfect. And I can update that, that's not a problem.
So you're saying add another sentence that says if the executive secretary is unavailable, they can designate a replacement?
Yeah, something to that, something like that.
There you go, and it could be Tom. I don't, I wouldn't mind, or it could be if you do, did have the bandwidth, or I did, or...
Just not me?
Got you, brother.
Who's anybody but commissioner Harv is not?
That's right. And you can put that in there if you like.
Rick, hard knife.
No, but it'll stay for the next board, and next board, and the next of board, so it's, it's a good thing to leave it kind of open.
Yeah, okay, I'm good with that. So can we make the new motion that says, cross out the red line, and add another sentence that says if the executive secretary is unavailable, they can designate a replacement?
I'm good with that as a second.
Everybody understand the proposed amended motion? Got a head shake?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any more discussion?
I think we have, Jim.
Are you ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foe say no. All right, unanimous, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Okay, are we going to number seventeen? Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, sir. This action requested is the board's review approve, review approval and direct issuance of the engineering design and financial services request for qualifications. Background, the board has expressed a desire to solicit requests for qualifications for firms to provide preliminary design and budgetary information in accordance with the peer development plan approved by the commissioners back in April. It has been developed with, or drafted with that in mind. I think it's ready to go out, contingent upon your approval and direction to issue the request for qualifications.
Any questions, or Mr. Hewitt?
I have a little discussion if I may.
Mr. Parfus?
I'm glad to have this in hand, but having made my first pass through it, I have a significant number of revisions that I think need to be discussed. I, so what I would make a motion to do is to ask the, the town clerk to poll the commissioners, to have a special meeting, to hash through these comments, so we can discuss them, and let's get that done before October seventh, so we can get it on the October agenda.
I'll second.
Yes.
Sorry.
Is that a motion?
Well, don't we have to...
Yes.
Set a date for that meeting?
Well, Heather normally polls everybody, and I know Dr. Dyer has a tough schedule. I've got several things coming up. I will do my very best to get this done. I think you all know I have as much vested in getting this thing to move forward as anybody.
Yes, sir.
And I do believe my comments are valid.
Okay, well, let's get a second, so we can discuss.
I'll second.
Okay.
What is the motion? The motion is for Heather to poll everyone for a special meeting, time and date.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, he just made a motion.
All right. To move it along, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. All right, so Madam Clerk, you know what you're being charged with?
Yes, sir.
Everybody understand what the clerk's going to do?
Is that going to be, when is our next seven?
So I think you said that we have to have the agenda items by the seventh, is that right?
I think it's the ninth.
Can you verify that? It's the ninth?
Yeah.
Um, the, you have to have the agenda items by the fourth.
By the who?
Meetings on the fifteenth, so...
October.
By October fourth would be the agenda item.
Then can we amend that motion to make it before the fourth?
Well, you've already been...
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's already been voted and passed. You can, you can make another motion, I guess.
I mean, I'll, I get the direction, so I'll try to...
And we've all got it, before the fourth, right? Okay, I can look at that.
Normally, when you pass a motion, you're done, you move on, but...
Which is only two weeks, really.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor, you've had to counsel me more than once on that.
Should we do it on D four? No, I guess that wouldn't get time to get y'all. Okay, we'll have to poll and see.
Yeah, just let the clerk work it out.
All right, buddy.
All right, we're going to number eighteen. Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, sir. This item is for the board to receive the attached modular stormwater plan back in March, the meeting of the Board of Commissioners. The, the Block Q camogrant was approved to include the restroom, associated parking for the restroom, site prep and landscaping at the staff. At the April meeting, staff was directed to come back with a modular stormwater solution, with a modular stormwater solution, and, in order to accomplish the grant requirements. So since you voted to move forward with the grant, we've provided that. We believe that a modular solution to accomplish the requisite stormwater can be attained for approximately $10,000, which is in the, the existing budget. So I recommend an approval of the plan, so we can go ahead and move forward with engaging the engineer and architect on the rec, the restroom facility design and publishing RFP for construction.
Mr. Parfus?
May I have a little discussion?
Can we do that through, you make a motion?
Okay. Motion to approve this, the modular stormwater plan?
Second.
Now discussion?
Yes. Yeah, I just want to make clear, what, what we've got in front of us is an approach to stormwater, correct? It's not, we're going to get all those trenches with all those depths. This gives us a set of options that will be employed to deal with 3,200 square feet of impervious surface, is that cor, surface, is that correct?
In various dimensions, but generally speaking, it's a modular system.
Right, and looking at the design, I don't see that there's any serious load limitations. In other words, you can drive a truck over it, that should be fine, and we should have a foot of dirt sitting on top, so that's going to be available for whatever, could be a dog park, whatever you got. Am I correct about that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, all I see here is a list of pipes and distances. Is there a site plan yet, or is that...
That, that, what will be accomplished next is for the architect to develop the site plan based on the constraints of it, using these parameters.
And the stormwater first modular phase or step, or whatever we're going to call it, is just the restrooms, is that correct?
Well, it would include the associated impervious surface for the parking also.
For the restrooms?
Yeah, that's, that's all that the grant was approved for.
Okay. I, I just, seems like a lot of pipe. I didn't know if that was all going to go on the ground, or...
It's, it's all in the ground.
Okay. So we'll see the site plan then coming out of this in terms of where these pipes are...
Well, the, the, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't...
So we will see the site plan, once this is designed, it'll show where...
It's not what I'm proposing to do. We've only got, I think, nine months left in this, and once y'all approve the grant going forward, the direction as I perceived it was for us to go ahead and construction, construct it. As a matter of fact, I don't even think that we, we were obligated or directed to bring this back to you, but I wanted to make sure that we did, so that our, when, during the budget workshops, there, there were inquiries and concerns about it being able to be accomplished within the budget. So the site plan itself is, is for those elements that were approved in the camogrant. Christie's got her hand up.
I was just going to add to what you just finished that statement, the only thing that you guys have approved, because the site plan was turned down, is the actual site, where the bathrooms are, and the architect will be moving forward with making his plans, schematics, and brand bridge, with building in the parking lot itself, but not producing a site plan.
So will we see those before they start construction, or it goes out for bid?
We'd intended to just move forward with this stormwater approval here and go to solicitation with an RFP for construction, because now what's going to happen is we're going to run up into some time crunches here if we're, if we're to come back... into some time crunches here if we're, if we're to come back to the board. You approved the grant that contained the elements of the, the site portion that has the bathroom and the parking lot layout in it already. So, I can't imagine that the, the architect's final rendering and what goes out for bid is going to be drastically different from that, that's already approved by the board.
Yes.
And Tom, I think the, all the piping that you're talking about, you say there's a lot of it. I remember when they did the basketball courts and stuff, there are unbelievable amount of pipes underneath that. It's like the wild buffalo over there when they did their parking lot. They had pipes back and forth, back and forth to retain the water. So, it's, it's pretty much gonna be underneath it.
Okay, I'm just looking at all the pipe on page 21, if that's all for the bathroom, then that's what we got out?
Yes, sir. I understand your.
And the parking lot with the bathroom?
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foe say no. Unanimous, Madam Clerk?
Thank you David.
All right, we go to 22. Y'all correct me if I missed a number or something. All right, 22. Mr. Evans?
22 is an encroachment agreement with Lost Boys Holding LLC. We've done these several times since I've been here. It's Hillside Drive, the invisible creek underneath the road. What it amounts to is, is there's an actual pronged dune that's sitting partially on top of it, not all the way on top of it, and it leaves an area that is, that is actually under town's control between the back of the properties and the ability to get to the dry sand. And so, you're actually signing an agreement that basically allows them to put a walkway across that pronged dune to get to the toe of that dune. And the agreement is, you know, if you read it, it's laid out, it basically says that at any point in time, that if it falls in disrepair, the building official love it by them, that they're either gonna have to repair it or remove it. It says that they have to maintain it, keep it in good condition. It says when they put it in, they can't damage the, the dune. So, it's basically permission from y'all to the, to allow them to use that, that area just to get to the, to the dry sand. That's what this encroachment agreement is. And we've done so. The house right next door has also done one.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a, a motion to, to approve the encroachment agreement with Hillside Drive between the town and the Lost Boys Holding LLC.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, anyone? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foe say no. It's unanimously passed.
Thanks Tim.
Number 24, Ms. Fennell.
The board adopted Resolution 2406 dated June 18th, authorizing the sale of town property located at 796 by the upset bid process. The final high offer in the amount of $565,000 was received from Paul Buchanan. The board must approve the final high offer within 30 days after the final period ended before sale can be closed. So, if the board would like to accept the offer, staff suggests making a motion to direct the town attorney to prepare the closing documents and the town manager to execute the documents and any follow-on actions.
I make the motion to do what Heather said.
I'll second.
All right, discussion, Mr. Smith?
So, in other words, this is the, the final price for that property? You don't think that we should give it another month or so to see if somebody will come in at a, at a higher price? That seems to be a terrible.
We would have to do the whole process over again, the way that you, we did. I mean, you guys can start the whole process over again, but the way that it is act, when somebody doesn't put bids in during one of the advertisements, that's what ends it, and the board has to decide at that point. So, you would have to start back over at zero again, if you, you know, you would have to another initial bid if you wanted to get higher than that.
Madam Clerk, for the purpose of everybody understanding, what is that sale, proposed sale price?
$565,000.
Excuse me, could you just tell us what we voided for?
That I can't do.
David?
Mr. Smith, Rainey?
325.
$334,000.
Heather?
Yes, sir, Mr. Smith?
What, what, you know, man, that, that's terribly cheap for a, a piece of property at Holden Beach. What, what is the appraised value of that property?
I think still it says like 800 maybe, but it doesn't, Dill doesn't know it's sitting next to a sewer station. That's the problem. I mean, you're, you, yeah, you can see second row with probably 800, but when you're sitting next to a sewer station, you're not gonna get that kind of money.
To, to answer your question, we did not have an appraisal done.
We, we had a tax card though, right? There's a tax value on it?
What's, yeah, what is the tax value, like 600 and something? You know that, Daniel?
I'm not sure.
I don't know.
I think it was in the, it was in the documentation for the.
Yeah, it was in the original documentation. I think it was 600 and something was the appraised value.
Mr. Myers?
We've been going around with this house for a long time. Personally, I don't think we ever should have bought it, but we bought it because of the noise concerns with the sewer station. We did not buy it as an investment or speculative land purchase to make money off of. You know, we don't have a plan for it, we've never really had a viable plan for it the whole time. We went to the market, this was basically an auction that people bid on. This is the high bid, this is the market price per the market. I think if we go back out again, we might end up lower. So, I say we accept the offer and move on to more important things and, and get this chapter past us, because we've been dealing with this house for a long time, and I don't think it's going up in value, this is what the market says.
Anybody else have a comment, question? Mr. Smith?
Well, I have to contradict that gracefully, nicely, but we did have plans. Christie had put together plans for, for that piece of property, and we looked at the different options. We just never had the funds and the budget to, to move forward on it. My, my feelings on it is you can't replace it once it's gone. If, you know, you've got a, a small area for parking there, it won't accommodate much parking, I think it was seven or eight cars, 10, I think that's all it is. I just, I think it's, it's, it's a shame to something that we already own to, to, to get rid of it, so I don't, I don't think that's enough money for it either.
Are you done? Can I speak?
Yes, sir, Doctor.
Yes, ma'am, Doctor.
I'd just like to state my previous concern with this property. I think it's a valuable piece of property to the town, number one, the proximity to the pumping station. We've had issues with the pumping station on Greensboro of them not having enough property there. I think with that location, if we ever ran into needing space for our public works department, then that's a, and they own that property, so I think, you know, that's a valuable asset to them. Also, until we do this ADA compliance, I feel strongly that we need some ADA compliant bathrooms down there. I don't think it's fair for people to use a porta potty with a wheelchair. That access down there is handicapped accessible. I think once we do an assessment, if we find out we need bathrooms there, we're gonna be limited to the space we can use. And I think at that price, I think it's more valuable for the town to have that asset. The land on the island is disappearing, and I think that any town, any land that the town owns right now, I think we should hold on to. It's a valuable asset, in my opinion.
Any more comments or questions? Okay, since they haven't none, I'm gonna call for a question here.
Call for a vote?
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foe say no.
No.
It's three to two, Madam Clerk, the motion passes. Okay, public comments on anything you want to talk about. If you raise your hand and be recognized, come to the speaker, come into the microphone and tell us your name and where you stay. I see, I see a hand, but I don't see a face. There it is.
Jim Bauer, 329 Ocean Boulevard West. Couple of things on the items today. As far as the, the pumping out, I'm so glad that we're finally doing something, because this pumping like the storm that we just had, it's not gonna be addressed by the public management plan that we're having. This is a, you know, a rare occasion where pumping has to be done to Mr. Clements and whoever else is involved with the pumping. I'm front row center on the 329, you can, I have a great view of Lake Holden every time somebody spits there, twice it was. But what I'm gonna say, what I'm gonna say is, this is not just an annoying condition, this is a hazardous condition. And if you're running low on air power, ring my bell. You know, I really, I, you know, you can get, you can get people to help people out. Also, once again, between the people that are trying to get to the beach or walking through, walking through water that is now disgustingly dirty, it's a hazardous condition. We also have all of our, all of our electric buried, which is sometimes 443 phase. You can have what's called sprayed electric when the water gets covered with salt, salt, and becomes conductive. People are walking around with their bare feet. You, okay, okay, I'm talking about Manhattan, but people used to walk in bare feet, they get, they get actually burned by voltage. Now, you have somebody walking through a puddle where they're actually drowning out with the electric. This is not just an annoying thing. It, it also reflects terribly on the town, but it needs to get done. You can call the fire department and have them help stretch a line. You know, to, you know, that's, that's what the emergency services are for, these are hazardous conditions. Also, as far as the pumping, I don't know what the situation is and who is worse affected, but I really shouldn't think it should be done on, by traffic. Myself coming across the road just the day of this storm, it looked like a 100 block was even worse than the 300 block. So, I can understand that, but it should be the major roads at first, and then getting to secondary. You had mentioned the old ferry, old ferry fine, but it, really, it's not a heavily traveled road, it's crossroad. So, I don't get that. Once again, 17, RFQ for the peer plans. Once again, you gotta ask for RFQs, we've asked for RFQs, the last board asked for RFQs. If you don't have a plan, you can't ask a qualification, because you don't know what the, what we're supposed to do. We should, once again, for the thousandth time that I've stood up here, ask the public, ask the town, what, what they want to do, and then you can have an RF, an RFQ on that. The, a great idea that was floated the last time, the last meeting was from a gentleman I didn't know, I didn't know of before, I'd never saw him before or since, he had a great idea. Let's tear down those two decrepit buildings that are never gonna be able to pay for themselves, and that would automatically open up, what, 30 parking spaces that we can actually make money on. Let's do that. Let's tear down those two buildings, if somebody gets hurt in them or on them, and let's make them into parking spots that'll at least pay until we can speculate on what we want to do with the actual physical property. Great idea by that guy, I wish I knew his name. Item 18, the Block Q, the modular plan for, planned for this. Once again, I'm gonna ask, I don't know if you've ever laid down asphalt, I just hope there's no paving involved with this situation, other than what has to be done for the ADA, for the ADA spots. Paving is incredibly, incredibly expensive to put down. It is, of course, non-permeable unless you have to make it even more expensive to make it permeable, and then to remove it is like a hazmat incident. So, if we're gonna move forward on Block Q, once again, without asking, without asking the town what they want from Block Q, I would hope that it is the least disturbing, easiest thing that can be done, where somebody can just turn it over with a shovel, if in six months we don't like it. I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Last call. All right, thank you. We're on number 25, 26, Mayor's Comments. I'd like to thank the police department, the maintenance department, the staff who worked long hours, some of which didn't even go to bed during the night, some didn't go home. And beyond what would reasonably be expected by any employee, I mean employer, these people were dedicated, did their jobs. I just wish the general public could have seen a lot of things that went on by these staff members in all these departments, that you never hear about, never see. Just, just a thank you for all that, that was done. Yeah. I've always said, if we can get by October the 15th, is that a hurricane in sight? We've made it through another season, we got another month to go. Don't wanna jinx us, but 30 more days and I'll feel a whole lot better if we don't see one, so I would also like to commend the general public and property owners for the behavior in this last event that we've just come through. People seeming, seemingly were nicer and more understanding. I got cussed out less times than normal. Less emails and phone calls. People were helping each other and accommodating and, and watching, observing the traffic driving through the water. They didn't seem to be driving as fast and seemed to be caring more about splashing other cars and flooding the neighbors' vehicles under the houses and so forth. Just overall, I thought the behavior was much better this time around than sometimes in the past. The county has designated this week to be Trash Week, Free Trash Week at the Brunswick County landfill, and.
You can't get there.
You can't get there.
Yeah, the, the next question is, are they going to extend that or change that? I've asked that question, I have not gotten an answer yet. So, just in case you were planning to take your boat and take something up there? You might rethink it until the roads are all open, but be on the lookout for a change of dates on that. I'm sure they will accommodate, because there's gonna be a lot more trash going up as a result of this storm, I'm sure. And just overall, I'm just thankful that we got so little damage overall, our beachfront, our homes, lack of wind damage, lack of tidal damage. We were just very fortunate. And I'm sure most all of you in the room are following what's taking place in our friendly neighbors' places like Southport, Boiling Spring Lakes and Oak Island and so forth. We were very, very fortunate, and we thank the good Lord for that. And with that, Mr. Myers?
Thank everyone for coming, and those of you online, thank you for participating. And as I always say, don't, don't hesitate to reach out, provide your input, provide your comments, we want to hear from you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir, I, I also wanted to thank the staff, and as Jim mentioned there, the, you know, these guys get out there and risk their lives walking through that standing water, where there's transformers within clear sight of where they're standing with that electricity. So, they, they're brave guys, they're understaffed, and I want to thank them for it. I want to thank the chief for a super thin staff that he has to continue to monitor our beach and keep us all safe. I know it's been tough with this, as few officers we have available right now, but thank you for all your efforts. It, it is good to have our island back, is the way I like to put it. There seems to be a lot less traffic now that we got through Labor Day. Again, that makes a lot of us residents a lot happier when it doesn't take an hour to get to the food line. But it is, it is good to see the smiling faces, is, you know, you, you recognize, after you pass each other several times, you recognize who it is and the people that wave and wave back. It's, it's good to have that island feeling back. As Alan said, I'm glad we got through the storm, although as Mr. Hewitt alluded to, you know, the after effects of what happened inland will be coming down, and I hope the folks on the waterway, canal lots of stuff, don't, don't have any issues there. Thank Frank, he'll work for his effort, extra efforts helping out Boiling Springs, I thought that was cool. The ADA compliance, again, this is something that, you know, we need to continue to be mindful of, you know, like, just like, we just sold a piece of property, that might be something that is gonna be required in the future, and we're, we need to, need to be mindful of that. to be mindful of that, because it's our compliance on the island, I don't think steel is where it needs to be. But otherwise, thanks everybody for coming out. We've got a good crowd in-house tonight, and the people online, and I hope everybody has a good rest of the week. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Did I get that all right?
All right.
Sorry, Ms. Thomas, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank everyone for coming and reiterate thanks to the staff. Your hard work is definitely really appreciated, and we're safe, so you did, did us good. Thank you.
Now, Doctor?
As, as was said, thankful for our staff. Many of our staff members were probably stuck here all night. They couldn't get home, or they had to work all night. You see all the public works out. It was pretty awesome of us to loan out Lieutenant Dilworth, since we're already shorthanded. When you see the chief of police out putting out cones in the pouring down rain, you know that everybody's working, working hard, and all the floodwater, you know, usually we use Brunswick Avenue as an escape route from Ocean Boulevard, and I think that was just as flooded. It was, driving through Barnum Town yesterday about lunchtime, it was, it was a pretty scary situation, but I think our staff did a great job, and I'm appreciative of that. I want to thank the, I think with Tropical Storm Debbie, and even though this storm wasn't named, I think people took it lightly. I think we need to realize that Mother Nature's going to dump anything she can on us, but I'm thankful for the staff, for the work they've done with our sea oats program. I think the sea oats have really stood the test of time with these last two storms. A lot of the storm surges have stopped at the area of the sea oats, so I'm thankful to the staff for all the work that they've done with that. My thoughts and prayers are with everyone around us, our neighbors, Winnabeau, Wilmington, Carolina Beach, Southport, Oak Island, all of our neighbors. Lots of people have lost their businesses, their homes, their cars, they couldn't get home to their families. I think material things are easily replaced, but you have to understand what people go through to obtain these material things, too. So, it's a lot of rebuilding. From what I understand, I don't think there was any loss of life, thankfully, but there's a lot of people that need to be in our thoughts and prayers. This storm was a once-in-a-lifetime for a lot of people, it's devastating, so just remember that, and I'm thankful for everyone coming out tonight.
Mr. Parfus?
I'd like to second what many people have said about staff and the hard work they've put in. I see some tired faces out there, and for those of you I've talked to, there's been some tired voices. And I really appreciate you guys just dropping in the gap and getting it done, because I know many departments are short, many people have been here a long time and do need to get home. One thing to mention is, I think we have a no swim situation. I don't know if it's been declared, but the water, I saw an advisory today that said the water was, you might reconsider going in. I haven't been down to the beach to look. Thanks to everybody who's come, everybody who's online. As I always say, it's important to participate in your government. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, have we done everything we're supposed to do tonight? Mr. Hewitt, you satisfied with-
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much for being here, and we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll say it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thanks again for being here.